Are you gonna start it already?
I'm just gonna start the recording.
Gotcha.
Oh, I thought you were talking to me.
Uh, sorry. Yeah, great. Go ahead. Thank you. I'll wait until five o'clock on the nose. Ah, okay. I'm gonna call to order the July 24th, 2025 meeting of the Lexington Planning Commission. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything that they needed to amend, change, comment on? Okay, then I'll take a motion and a second to approve.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and the motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. So we have two sets of minutes. The first one is from June 12th, 2025, and the second is from June 26th, 2025. So I had sent some comments to Arnie about the June 12th, and that's what is in front of us up here. Um, the comments that I asked him, or that I said that I was gonna be adding are in red. Um, should I read those?
Probably be helpful, yes. Everybody has that supplement on your desk.
Okay. Okay, so this is on page three of five at the bottom. Um, and this is in the, um, this, this was the item zoning, um, well, ZOA 2025 dash oh three, a request by Francisco Benincasa to amend the zoning ordinance to allow internally illuminated canopy signs in the C1 and C2 zoning districts. Um, so we had a healthy discussion about that. And then at the end, so we're looking at section four, commission discussion and decision. At the end, I wanted to, to add after, um, so it says MS Harlow and C Hall agreed as Spencer suggested the proposal and a full review of the signed standards. And then adding in, including involvement of the ARB to ensure the effectiveness of any new standards. Um, I just felt like that was important, just in case somebody um, was looking back at these minutes as the, the only record and didn't have time to go through. So that's, and I, and I did go back, um, and listen to the record, and that is in there. So, so that's one. Um, the second one is on page four, and it is just the removal of the word "far" in the top paragraph. So, um, it says Commissioners Spencer Hall and Harlow were inclined toward a far more cautious review, and I would just say a more cautious review. So that's the second one. And then the third one is at the bottom of the same page under review of the Governance Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. So in this, this is in the third bullet down. So I'll read from Jay, Jay Eastwood remarked that while he found this review of the comp plan to be a good exercise, the commission seemed to have settled into a pattern of setting a fairly low bar for what is considered ongoing. He suggested subsequent reviews might benefit from a finer method of measurement. Um, and then because the, the conversation did not stop there, but went on, um, I'm, I would like to add, in response, Spencer indicated that the original request to staff was that there be four columns that would allow for more granularity. She discussed the need for additional information, such as who's responsible for each action in the plan. She also noted that indicating while something is ongoing does not mean that it no longer needs attention. Uh, and that the intent in this exercise, given the addition of only one column rather than three, was to be able to determine if the plan, items in the plan had even started. This is inaccurate. I'm not sure that we need all of this. Um, in fact, I, I might say, sorry, we didn't have a lot of time for review. I know that staff is understaffed right now. Um, but, um, so I sent this, this off this afternoon. And, and I would say that, um, perhaps getting rid of this, the final sentence there, the, she also noted that indicating something is ongoing. Um, that probably is not needed. So does anybody have any thoughts on this, these? So why don't we take out that last sentence? So it'll just be in response, Spencer indicated. Um, and then, and ending up with the second. So it's just adding to the two, first two sentences. Does anybody have any?
No.
Concerns?
None.
Okay. Um, okay, so does anybody have any other comments on the minutes? Uh, this, these, these ones from, um, from June 12th?
It's very, very minor, but in all, on all the other parts, it has M dot S dot for Mary Stuart Harlow, and it does not after it says "far." So there's a period missing. I don't know if that's
Yep.
Something more important, but.
It is important. Ah, oh, I see you, the, the dot. Yep, thank you. Okay, um, should we, would it be helpful to have a vote on both of the minutes? I feel like it probably would separately.
Separately, probably better.
Yes.
Since we've had some more discussions about the first set.
Okay, so can I, we need a motion and a second on these as amended.
I move we approve the minutes as amended.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, and the motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to the second set of minutes, um, from the, just hang on. From the June 26th meeting, 2025 meeting of the Lexington Planning Commission. Does anybody have any comments, concerns, additions, corrections? Then I will take a motion and a second on this one as well.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and the motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to the next item on the agenda, citizens' comments on matters not on the agenda. It's nice to see some additional faces in our audience. So if anyone has a, a comment that they would like to make on something that is not on this agenda, now would be the time to do that. I welcome you to step up to the, to the microphone. Okay. Arnie is not gonna be making a comment. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close this section of this, um, of the citizens' comments on matters not on the agenda, and we'll move on to new business. So the first item of business, new business, is the Lexington Comp Plan Review um, by Jeremy Crute with the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission. So if you'll come up and say your name and address, speak into the microphone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Name's Jeremy Crute, uh, 316 Vine Street, Stanton, um, Virginia. Um, if, as was mentioned, I'm with the Central Shenandoah Plan District Commission. Been tasked with helping the city update, uh, your comprehensive plan, and just wanted to provide a brief update on that process. Um, I think I'm, I'm convinced that July is the shortest, shortest month on record because it really flew by. And I think because of that, I apologize that we don't have completed drafts of chapters for you yet, as we intended. Uh, that should be coming within the next week. Um, but was at least able to provide, I guess you could call this month a month of preparation in terms of doing some of the initial data collection that was provided, put or compiled into the community profile, which I believe was provided earlier this week, um, as well as preparing for a lot of the upcoming community engagement, um, including a draft of the survey and a plan for, um, the open house, which I know was late notice, but sent to y'all this afternoon. So I'd, if, hope you all had a chance to take a peek at that. But if not, I'm happy to sort of, we'll at least briefly walk through, um, some of that for you. Um, but at least in terms of next steps in particular, um, I'm anticipating getting a draft of the Historic Resources Chapter to y'all sometime next week. Um, and then we'll be continuing to, to plug away probably on the Economy Chapter um, after that, um, and get that to you certainly in, well in advance of the next meeting. So I'll have time to review that, to, uh, read through it and provide any comments that you might have, or additions, edit suggestions, um, uh, well in advance for the next meeting so we can have a good discussion about both of those chapters, um, as well as hopefully, um, starting to get a lot of the movement on the public engagement, getting the survey out, et cetera. Um, so, uh, if it would be helpful, um, I do have one question for y'all as it relates to the community profile. Um, I'm also welcomed, would love to have any feedback that you might have on the profile, or any other data that you'd like to see represented there. Um, and then separately, um, I can go ahead and walk through at least the, the draft of the survey, um, as well as, uh, the, a rough draft of what I guess you could call an agenda for the, the first public open house that we're, we're hoping to do. Um, so I guess just real quick, when it comes to the community profile, the, the one question I had for y'all is related to the population projections. Um, I, let me make sure I can give you the correct page number that that is found on, um,
Nineteen?
Nineteen. That should, yes, it should be page 170, at least according to that, those page numbers, but.
Yeah, please.
170?
170.
So those.
Teen in our pocket? That we're looking at the appendices, yeah?
Yes, that's correct. So, uh, just so you're aware, those, those population projections come straight from the Weldon Cooper Center out of UVA, which is the sort of standard across the state of Virginia. Um, they come out with new sets of those every year, and the newest ones happen to come out this July. So it was just in time for, for ours. Um, they estimate roughly two to three percent of population growth, like each of the coming decades. And my question for y'all i- is regarding the degree to which you, y'all are comfortable with proceeding with those as, um, the population projections represented within the comprehensive plan. Um, I know land and, uh, I guess developable land is always, um, at a premium within the city of Lexington. And so, um, wanted to, to start because that number ends up feeding into, you know, estimates of how much housing demand there might be, how much, a lot of resources there might be. Um, that's sort of a fundamental baseline number to, to start from. And so I, I would say that in any of the comprehensive plans that we work on, it's sort of the, the baseline that we start from. But again, before, um, before moving on, wanted to bring that question before you all to determine or to, um, have y'all's input as to whether or not, um, you were comfortable moving forward with the population projections as, um, developed by the Weldon Cooper Center. Which I guess I should have stated that, that, but those estimates come out to be, uh, a population of a little over seventy-seven hundred, um, by 2050.
So that, that's larger than we've ever been, it looks like?
Correct.
Um, okay, does, does anybody have any, sorry. This is, th- these, these numbers, with these, uh, we, we just received these yesterday. So.
Absolutely.
Um, does anybody have any comments?
Um, well, a, a question maybe. So when you use those projections as inputs to other models for the sake of planning, like, do you have a way to incorporate uncertainty around these projections? Confidence intervals or something like that, and how wide are they?
For sure. It's, it's a great question. And I, I would say I often will, it would include a low, medium, and high projection within these of, and you, you often using Weldon Cooper Center as my medium. And then, you know, maybe one percent higher, one percent lower as like, uh, to give that sort of confidence range, as you were talking about.
Yeah.
Um, that would be very easy to do. Um, in some ways, at least as it's represented in that table, I simply followed the formatting from the previous comprehensive plan on that. But it'd be very easy to, to come up with low and high projections, and then to incorporate that into a lot of those other, um, estimates as it relates to more specific items in future chapters.
Could potentially be helpful if you don't think it would complicate things too much. If, if you all agree, just if we're uncertain about those projections, if there's a lower and a higher one, is that, is that a standard?
That, that's pretty standard, yeah, for sure. And even also, I guess, to your, to your point earlier, if, uh, as relates to this being a higher projection than Lexington has ever been in the past, we could even consider using that as the high, uh, using Weldon Cooper as the high and ratcheting it down, um, for a little bit lower to maintain a much more, I guess, growth level is slightly more in line with what it's been for the last thirty-plus years, um, which is remaining relatively static. Um, so if, if that's sort of more comfortable, I can have the Weldon Cooper be the high projection, and then medium and low below that, that'd be another option, um, to, to pursue if you'd like it. But yes, it'd be very easy to include high, medium, and low.
I, I certainly think that that's a, a good idea.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I, I'm, I'm looking at these numbers. There are two periods of time in the early nineteen hundreds, and then in the late nineteen hundreds, where we had negative numbers, um, negative change in population somewhat substantially. And, and I'm looking at these, and I'm trying to think about what would have
Yeah.
caused that. I'm not actually sure. Um, and then I guess in nineteen fifty, it goes up by fifty per, fifty-two point seven percent. And I'm guessing, is that, is that because of
Annexation.
The W unit?
Annexation.
Oh, annexation. Okay, thank you. Wasn't sure what that was. Um, okay, thank you. Um, okay. So, so then you can use this as the high number, and, okay. I, I think that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Are, are we confident that this would be the high one, though? I mean, that, I don't want to belabor it. I think you're asking us a really important question.
True.
And I think we, it sounds like we're in agreement that some range of possible values would be useful.
Sure. I think maybe what might make the most sense is I will go back and look at the growth rate over, say, the last, we'll go back to, say, but either, let's say, two thousand for the last twenty-five years. Um, find the growth rate of that. Use that. I'll, I'll take a look to see if that either makes sense as the medium or the low, um, and then have Weldon Cooper be the high. Um, and if, if that growth rate of last twenty-five is the low, then find something in between to be a medium. Is that a reasonable approach?
I mean, sounds so, to me, it's, it sounds like a complicated endeavor because the decisions that we make following up from the comprehensive plan kind of shape, right? If you increase density and housing, for instance, right? Which is one of our goals, there, that's gonna be a new, a different driver of these numbers, right?
Absolutely.
Since to some extent, these, these predictions are conditional on the choices that we make, they're guided by the plan. Am I understanding correctly?
Uh, that is, that is very true, for sure. And it, I think that's, that can be a factor in our own consideration in terms of what we think is a reasonable number. The other thing I will say is particularly as we go through this process, I, I always like to start with this from the beginning because it is foundational to so many other decisions moving forward. However, whatever we decide on tonight doesn't necessarily need to be the final decision. So as we're going through the process, and as we're, you know, as you're saying, hoping that the plan will, you know, see a, a future with more variety and density of housing, um, that that might, you know, take up the growth rate a little bit in the future, and we can revisit this near the end of the process to kind of make sure that we're still think those lines with our vision for the city in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that might also, I mean, do we have build-out numbers? Like if we, so I just wonder, if, if we had build-out numbers for, for everything that is, everything that, yeah, it would be so complicated, though. I'm just thinking about.
Just assuming that we're gonna stay with the current zoning and have a build-out for that.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the question?
Yeah, and like how many, how many additional? This is where it gets very complicated. But how, how many additional, um, ADUs could we do? Um, for example, or, um, how, well, how many apartment buildings could we build? What kind of density? So if, for example, the V-dot property became sort of higher density apartments, it, it would just be interesting to know right now at build-out, what could we be?
Sure.
Um, yeah. Uh, but, but again, that might be too much.
It gets, it's not, it's not necessarily too much. I think it does, it's a tough number to, to estimate. But, and the other factor that also plays into it is how household size might change over time.
Totally. Absolutely.
Which, you know, we could certainly use the current as a baseline to sort of estimate what, what would the total population be in a build-out type scenario? Um, but that's always, uh, there, there, anytime you start looking into the crystal ball, there are so many factors that can change.
Absolutely.
That's why, to some degree, I like falling back on the Weldon Cooper's centers because it's sort of a, you know, an established standard that, um, nobody really knows what it's gonna look like, like twenty-five years from now. And so using that as a, as a baseline to sort of build around is, is a, is a pretty safe, safe bet that way. But, um, I do like the idea of, of using that as our, as our, as our high and, um, maybe our more recent growth rate as, uh, either the low or the medium.
So this is, yeah, although, and from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, no, sorry, from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, it was an increase of three point nine percent.
Correct.
No.
And if you're curious just to see what it looked like.
Can't be right.
That's, uh.
But, but those numbers are not correct, it looks like. But those numbers are not correct, it looks like. Because from twenty-ten, twenty-ten was seven thousand forty-two, and twenty-twenty is seven thousand thirty, that's should be a negative.
Absolutely. I'll go back and double check and correct that.
Sorry to to create work for you.
Not at all.
If you're curious just to see what it would look like. That show how it would, the the projections would have to go from a pretty different.
Yeah, yep, that's it. Right. Although that also does reflect what we're, what we've been working towards.
Very true.
So.
Well, if if as you get a chance to review the appendices, appendices A and B within the community profile, let me know if you have any other feedback moving forward. Happy to to take that by email or phone or however it is easiest for you all in the in the future. And whether that's noticing any other mistakes, like the one that on table B one or any other, again, data that you think would be useful to include to help inform all the other chapters of the plan, more than welcome to 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 receive feedback on any of that.
I I have a question on page twenty-three. I'm, I was, it's more of a, can you tell, can you give us some insight into this? On, so this is page twenty-three under economy, and it's table B eight, where the the change in Lexington in median household income goes from twenty sixteen, it's thirty-four thousand four sixty-four to eighty-nine thousand five ninety-eight, which seems like a huge jump, and I'm just wondering, that's a short period of time to have such a huge increase.
Absolutely. I I can't, I don't know all of the factors that go into that, for sure. I will say that there is to some degree across the board, even nationwide, there was a pretty significant jump within that timeframe. And so to a point, it's following national trends. Now, that's obviously much more, much faster than, say, the national average would be. And sort of, as you can see, they're much faster than the Rockbridge County area is as well. So I'll have to do a little bit more digging to sort of try to figure out where that might have come from or why that would have been such a significant jump like that, but.
It's almost like you're looking at two different distributions, like maybe students are included at the lower end of the distribution in the first number or something.
Either that or a lot of people who were lower, had the lower household incomes moved out. Like, a lot of people moved out because maybe the rents were too high, or there wasn't enough affordable housing, back to that affordable housing issue. Anyway, that that's an interesting number. I'd I'd want to maybe confirm it. And and then I don't, I'd I'd think it would maybe help us to understand.
For sure.
What happened there.
The other thought that just came to mind as another possible explanation to the point of maybe this is student population is all of these estimates are based on the five-year estimates of the ACS data, and so it's a sampling of the last five years. So that would mean it would be a sampling of the COVID years as well. So if all the students were not here during COVID, it's possible, to your point, that that sample might not have included students at least for that year of data. And while the more recent years, or the way they, those five-year estimates work, they they weight the more recent years, so in this case, twenty twenty-three more heavily than the previous years before that, it still could be impacted by that, at least it could be a factor in why it jumped up that fast. I'm speculating, but at least it could very well be.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
It's a really important point, I think, you raised. There's no way, yeah, but like the, we're seeing, the story we're seeing in the raw numbers there can't indicate what it seems to indicate, right?
I'll at least, if nothing else, I'll just certainly look at the one-year estimates of the ACS to see if twenty twenty skyrockets. And if that's it, then that might be a big explanation for it.
That would, that would be great. And then in terms of of edits, I assume that it would be easier for you to get those over email or?
Happy either way, email's probably the easiest, especially if you want to mark up either either it within the PDF or a printed version and scan and send it to me, any and all is is welcome, but edits via email would be great.
Okay, this this is mostly just a for clarity's sake kind of thing, so. Think, does anybody else have any other?
On the appendices themselves?
Yeah, on the appendices. Okay. I I think we can all sort of take a little bit more time and and go through them. And and we all have your email address, so we can send them to you separately. And I think, Arnie, correct me if I'm wrong, but we should send them to him separately, not including everybody so that we, because we can't engage in a conversation off.
I would certainly prefer you either, or prefer that you send them directly, Jeremy, copy me, but do not do a reply all, hey, these are my comments and these are mine. So just if you do them separately, that way we will never be accused of having a meeting over email. Perfect.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, what else? What's next?
So if you want to look at the the draft survey there, again, this is another thing that happy to take more feedback on in the coming week as you have it more of a chance to take a closer look at it, process it, see how you'd like to move. I will say this is in large part, trying to think of the, a, we'll call it a generic comprehensive plan survey. And especially the feedback I would love to have from you all is how can it be tweaked? How can the options and the questions be tweaked in a way that makes the most sense for the city of Lexington? For an example, are there, say, options that it asks about that aren't relevant, that we can cut out? Are there options that are missing that you think, hey, this is one of the questions or factors that we really, really want to get feedback on? Or are there other questions that can be added? I did purposely, to that end, I purposely included a question bank at the end of that to give you as many options as possible in terms of other questions you might want to add back in if you would like to 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 do so. As always, I will, I guess, caution that the the trick with survey design is always finding that right balance between asking for all the information that you'd like to get out of a survey, while keeping the survey short enough that people will actually take it and to maximize the amount of responses that you'll get. And so to that end, I purposely tried to keep it so that at least the paper version of it would fit on two pages, front and back. Because oftentimes, we could start adding a third page to it if people pick it up and see that that this is getting pretty long, they might want to put it down and not not finish it. So I I should also back up just to say that this, what's before you is a draft of the questionnaire. It will also be anticipated to be a paper version of the survey that folks who would prefer not to use their computer would be able to take. We, once we sort of agree and finalize the 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 language of the questionnaire itself, I'll put it into Survey Monkey, so it'll be available to be used or taken online. We can create a QR code and push it out on social media or however, whatever outlets the city would like to try to push it out for. But we can also print copies and have those available in places that you think makes the most sense for where folks in Lexington are most likely to see it, pick it up and take it. So so that's at least in, even in that intro, that's, you know, once we get the Survey Monkey survey set up, we'll include a link to that in that that intro, as well as where we, if we can get a date and time set up for the first open house, we can plug it and put an advertisement for it in that intro as well. But I'll at least very quickly walk through some of it. And then again, more than would love for, once you get a chance to digest it a little bit further, to 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 let me know if if there are any questions that you think are especially important, not important, tweaks to language, you know, would like to make a swap with one of the ones in the question bank, et cetera. So first off, it's just really basic in terms of, you know, how long you've lived in in the, in within the city. And if you haven't lived there, then, you know, how, what is your connection to the city? There is a business owner, a property owner, or employee. The the next questions are more of just trying to get the the sort of more overarching issues of, you know, what do you value most in terms of like, especially when it comes to long-term visioning, people's values do matter a lot when it comes to what your vision for the future should be. So try and identify what folks' values are as it relates to what they want the city to be like in the future. And then second is just the biggest challenges that they're that they're facing. Again, that's more of an overarching, like if we're going to prioritize what to focus on, try to get a sense of that. Similarly, then kind of takes that a step further in terms of identifying specific features that you might like to prioritize before. So I guess those first five questions, I guess you could say are more like your introductory questions. It's probably not a great way to phrase that, but it's a little bit more of the overarching questions. The next set then get into more specific to each chapter. So question six is more related to land use, and at least in terms of thinking of if there were, it was going to be new development, what types of new development that might likely like to be. Question seven is specific, or I guess F-seven, yeah, question seven is specific to the transportation system. Questions eight and nine, or eight, excuse me. I guess I should say seven and nine, I think I might actually redo that order. Seven and nine are related to the transportation system. Question eight is on housing, ten is regarding recreational facilities, eleven is more of community services and infrastructure. And then twelve then gets folks to sort of acknowledging that the fact that there are very limited resources and the city can only do so much at any given time, trying to get folks to identify what the the top priority ought to be with all of the different avenues that resources could go to within the city. The final multiple choice questions are then just a little bit of, you know, demographic questions, which are not so much to actually provide estimates of the actual demographics within the city because all the data within the the the, from the Census Bureau can do that. It's more just to make sure that we've actually surveyed a representative swath of 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 the of the city residents. And then the last two are just giving folks, if they want to provide a little bit more open-ended responses of about their 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 favorite thing, and if there's one thing they can change, which again, gets to that to that values, gets to that priorities and gets to, you know, ways in which we can improve. So that that's at least the the survey in a nutshell. Again, there's a whole question bank after that that does a lot more, a lot more specifics, but those I thought might be, was at least my initial take at what I thought could be a good set of survey questions. And would love to, if you have any feedback on it right now, would love to to hear that. But again, more than welcome to to take, take a day or or a week to to digest, to write up all your comments and to to send it to me. I think it probably would, just for the sake of trying to get the survey out as fast as possible, I think in this case, would it be reasonable to see if you can get comments back to me within a week? Let's say next Thursday, would that be a reasonable timeline?
Yes.
I think that sounds very reasonable.
Correct.
Does anybody have any in initial things that?
I, I am weirdly somebody who loves to take a survey, like every single time, I'm like, absolutely. Like, if I can help, I will absolutely help. So, and I really like a lot of these additional questions in the the question bank. Is there a way to kind of say, like, I I do surveys and forms at work, and so there's always a way to put logic of like, are you interested in answering more? Could that kind of be there? Because I love some of these questions, but I agree, people don't, they just want to like, check, 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 they don't want to fill it out, put all their thoughts in it, just checkboxes. So I guess is there a way to try to have some of these additional questions in there as well? Is my thought.
Certainly, the online survey would be very easy to put some sort of logic in there of, you know, have a, I guess, an intermediate thank you, and, you know, if you'd like to provide more feedback, click forward and you can, you know, do that. So I'd be, or I guess it would probably have to be a yes or no question, and if they say yes, then for sure. That would be very easy to do with the server, the online version.
Does that create any problems with your data set?
I think we, I think we would have to treat the two sets of questions separately, essentially, that is, especially if all of the paper versions don't have that, then it certainly, you'd almost have to treat them as two separate samples, I think. So I don't think it would create any problems with the first set of questions because those would at least be all of those, but it at least might be a little bit of additional information based off those additional questions. So we, I have no problem with doing it, but you're certainly right that we wouldn't be able to treat that second set of questions with the same level of validity, is not quite the right word, but validity in order to.
Could you just use like the first part as like the data part and the other part is just like fun feedback? You know what I like, where it doesn't actually like impact the data of it, but like, it's still helpful to know as planning commission.
Absolutely. And typically, with public input surveys, they're not, they're certainly not, while we want to try to hold them to as high a standard as we can, we're also probably not going to do a lot of detailed statistical analysis in our, or that kind of thing. So that is always that balance of, you know, to some degree, more feedback is always better, even if we would have to make sure that that second data set is treated as a secondary source of information.
And would you be, how hard would it be to to plug all of the answers in to and and have sort of like rated by the the number of answers or, you know, in a bar chart or something?
Would not be hard to, I think, we could probably just include as like a little text box within, if say, like, if we're putting all of these into, say, bar charts, pie charts, et cetera, it'd be pretty easy to put a little text box that just says N equals whatever the number is in terms of the number of responses for that particular question. Because as with with any survey, there'll be a lot of folks who skip questions. And so that that's always sort of a dynamic within any, any survey data set as the number of responses to each individual question often does vary. And so it would just be that there might be a subset that has significantly lower N for each one.
Okay. Anybody else?
Right, but significantly lower and not just reducing statistical power, but you'd have selection on other characteristics into filling out those questions, right? So you could be getting systematically different samples, is your earlier point, I think, right? So you're right, we could, we'd see the different sample sizes, but you'd have different kinds of people filling out the second part. Not a reason not to do it, but I think in the light of what you were suggesting, like, if we were to have an optional second part, maybe rather than that have, you know, things where you're trying to make apples-to-apples comparisons across what people are saying, just like additional questions that might surface ideas that are open-ended, is that in the spirit of what you're suggesting?
Kind of, like, I think there's different, just different groups around town that if they knew that this was something that was wanted, right? Or that we could just like, I think it's so easy to collect this information as like the government is doing it, or like, we're asking for it. And so if we can share any of that information of like, this is, this is what was most voted on. People wanted to see restaurants, and maybe it might help business owners open, like, just stuff like that, if they could get it from a larger group because we're asking.
Right. Making sure people have a chance to tell us not just the answers to the questions that we want to ask them, those are important, but other things that they think are important.
Right, which is what you do in those last two questions.
There's open-ended questions there, for sure.
What is your favorite thing? If you could change one thing, it might be just that you also provide an additional, like, is there anything else you want us to know?
Yeah. And I guess, maybe, I was going to suggest too that we could, you know, because if people are going to skip questions, it's always going to be the open-ended ones.
Yes.
And so I guess to your point, if there are, say, questions within the question bank that we could reword to be an open-ended question and include those all at the end, it might provide an opportunity for people who want to to provide feedback on those extra questions in a way that hopefully wouldn't drop our response rate because a lot of people would just skip through those and move on anyway. So that might be another approach. I know that would get a little bit complicated with the paper version because there might not be space to 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 add all those in. But that might be another another possibility, I I suppose.
So of the additional options, though, I read through them, it looks like a lot of them have some similarities to some of the the ones in, you know, it's like, it looks like they were like reworded slightly different. And that's, that's great, and and I think that that's something that we would definitely want to make sure that we're not asking people duplicative questions, and then obviously, some of them are very different. I would actually say that the one that I think is, that I would really like to see in the survey is number eighteen, which is how do you typically receive information and emergency updates from the city of Lexington? I think that this would be, as long as we are asking those questions, that knowing how people are getting their communications is really critical. It's always really critical to know how we can best communicate. And then seeing that we have two of our city council members here, I I have a, like, seeing the monthly city newsletter up in as one of the options, we do not have that that I'm aware of. But gosh, it would be great if we did.
For sure.
Yep.
Electronic that you can subscribe to.
Right, just that would have, you know, all the upcoming meetings and city, whatever, you know, links to trash collection. And here are the major decisions that were made by council, and here are the major decisions that were made by planning. Just sort of like, you know, just a a dump of information that people who are looking for information about the city and and the government would have access to. Because I think we can't, we're not looking to to replace what is provided in the news gazette, but we're, I think that it's unrealistic to assume that the news gazette is is going to always provide all the votes. I don't, I don't think that that's part of what they they do. So anyway, that that I would love to see that. So anyway. Which is to say, it might have to have a differently worded question, if this was, if this was an option, would you be interested?
For sure, yeah.
Does anybody else?
In that question, too.
In that question too, information and emergency updates are really different sorts of information.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
So it would almost help to split that question into, how do you receive information? How do you receive emergency?
Yeah. That's true. And and also the Harrisonburg Rockingham Emergency Communication Center, I assume that's something that's.
I think that the language from that question specifically was pulled from a, that was probably one of the towns up in Rockingham County.
But we do have something where you can get notifications that, you know, there's a water main break or whatever. And 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 those are text alerts, maybe email as well, I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, it does a phone call too.
And a phone call, that's right, that's right. The phones all ring.
Lockbridge alerts, is that?
Lockbridge alerts, yeah.
I think it started going to next door too. I got like multiple notifications at once, like there are multiple things.
Right, yeah, right, right.
All from the same thing, yeah. But even like VMI is doing cannons, right? Like that'll come across on it.
Exactly. So yeah, these, it's great. So then anybody who has additional comments will
Yeah, how about?
Email them to you by.
Well, prob, would it be, especially if we're, I guess, in agreement that we'd like to include the communications question within it? How about I send you a revised version of it tomorrow morning? And then if you can send me comments based on the revised version of it by next Thursday or so, or even next Friday, if that's preferable, that would be great. And then shortly thereafter, say, early the week after that, and put it in the Survey Monkey, make sure that's ready to 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 go out to the the public shortly after that.
That would be, that would be great if that's a long enough turnaround time for you.
Should be, I think so, yeah.
All right, terrific. And and is it easiest? So I've already made some comments on on my digital version. What's the easiest way? Is it best to just write them in there and highlight them? Or is it best to say this question reword, I don't know, you tell me.
Maybe I the short answer is I don't have too much of a preference, whether it's like put it in a comment within in the Word document, or if you want to do track changes and sort of type in like things that are the changed on more than open to either of those. And yeah, I don't think I have too much of a preference between the two. So I'd say whatever is easiest for you is fine with me.
I'm, I'm gonna also give you this.
That's great.
Um, so you have it. Okay, anything else?
Where's this your email? I'm sorry, I was trying to find it.
It is, it's at the, it's at the bottom of the the survey. It is just jeremy@csppdc.org. It's sorry, it's the the survey, the bottom of page four of the survey, yeah, sorry about that. I can give you my card too, if that's.
Make sure I had it, thank you very much, sorry.
I think maybe also we've all received an email that was, that included you.
Okay.
One more thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to belabor it, you're being very generous with your time and expertise and really appreciate it. So, and I think the surveys is super interesting to read and great questions on there. And this is my first time while on planning commission being involved in a comp plan review. And so, you know, when you design a survey, right, you start with like, what do we want to know? And then you design instruments to try to measure that. And I'm wondering, given your experience in this process, if you can just tell us a little bit about what you think are the most important things that we, that we should be trying to gauge like public opinion about. And I mean, we can sort of infer it from the questions that you're asking here, but if you can give us that sort of more, what are the big things that matter most that we ought to make sure we're hearing in this process?
It's, it's a great question. I think maybe the easiest way, the the first thing that comes to mind is actually the what you just said at the end of in terms of trying to figure out what matters most. Cause so, and I think specifically to try to, as it relates to each of the topic areas that the comp plan will address, the transportation and land use and economy and historic resources. What are the most important things as it relates to each of those? So say with transportation, is the most important thing just needing more, you know, sidewalks and bike lanes? Is 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 when people are trying to get around the city from the day to day, is that the thing that they want most? Or is it just safety improvements to intersections? Or is it, you know, fixing all the potholes? Or, you know, what of all those different things? Again, city only has so many resources to be able to put to address each of those issues. So if the city was gonna focus their efforts on one of those over the next five, 10, 15, 20, 20 years, which of those things would it would it be? And so I think with each chapter, trying to view it through that lens of, as we're trying to create a plan that points, you know, provides a north arrow for the city in terms of all of the development related decisions that you're all gonna make over the next 20 years. You know, what are the 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 most, the factors that are most important and that matter the most to residents and and citizens as it relates to each of those topic areas? I think that's, that's probably the 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 main lens to which I'd try to look at it.
Sure.
And if you're open to any ideas that y'all have as to how to tweak the survey design to make that we're getting to that. And then I think the, I'd really, the probably of the question that I like the best is question twelve, just in terms of, you know, it's very easy within a survey to to have people say, I want this and this and this and this. And I would love to have, you know, the whole litany of things that we all love to have, but recognizing the the fact that we do have limited resources. If you, if you're gonna have to put your money where your mouth is, you know, what is the thing? And so I think that's sort of why kind of having that, I don't wanna say cost benefit analysis, but having that, forcing folks to have to really pinpoint what the most important thing is, is also, I think, a useful, a useful useful piece of information to glean from a survey like this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question. Okay, is there anything else? That we should hear from you or think about?
I think the last, the last thing would just be the the sort of, I guess we'll call it agenda for the for the open house, which I think I sent earlier today as well. I know where the PDC will be doing, I think, as we mentioned as last month, we're doing three public open or public engagement sessions. Usually like to have one as early in the process as you can, usually like have it one near the end of the process. So at the beginning, you can get as much feedback onto each of those chapters to sort of, you know, inform each of them as you go. And then one at the end that's more related to, here's the plan, you know, take a look at it, see if we've got it right. And so this one is is more of that that first one. And so we at least, again, am open to to switching this up, but in at least recommending, and which is a way we've done it in the past of having sort of an open house style session. We have got different stations and at each of those stations, it essentially is related to several different chapters of the plan. So one station would be transportation, one would be land use, one might be placemaking in in parks and amenities. One's more of an infrastructure, et cetera. And each of those stations would have some form of activity or activities where people are either a flip chart with a question that people can write in what their answer is. Or say, in some cases, say with the infrastructure one, activity we like, again, as related to that limited resources question is you get a a little essentially like voting card where you have the, you know, if if we only have funding to do two infrastructure improvements, what would they be? Would it be water lines or sidewalks? So really have forcing folks to to think through that kind of thing. And say with with transportation, we can print out a large scale map and give stickers and you can print out, put a green sticker on on where you need safety improvements. You can put a blue sticker on where you need sidewalks, you can put a red sticker where there's traffic issues or with that kind of thing. And say, yeah, so I think that's that, that's how the the whole thing is laid out in terms of having multiple different stations. The the idea is these these sessions work best when you can have a facilitator at each one of those stations to ask follow up questions, to write down people, what folks are saying. Cause a lot of folks will want to come to the the sessions and mostly just want to to sort of tell you the answers to the questions, and which is wonderful. And you can write as fast as you can and try to capture as much of that information as you can. But we're also purposely trying to design it in a way where if we don't have eight plus facilitators able to to house all those questions, that there are ways in which people can write answers and answer questions and vote and and engage with the the material and provide meaningful feedback that we can capture, whether or not there's someone there sitting and writing everything down or not. Which I'll, I'll definitely be able to bring couple, several of my staff to to do so or to to help facilitate with that. And
And would you be looking for volunteer, like, would it be inappropriate for us?
Would love it if you're willing to. Certainly, that's, that's how we've done it in the past. If if you're able and willing, it's again, we've purposely designed it in a way that does not need that, if that's not a, if that's not an option. And we'd ultimately defer to that, how the the city would like to to pursue that, but that's at least the way we can, we can do it. So I guess similar to the the survey, would love to get any feedback on on the the usefulness of each of those questions and each of those stations. Particularly, I think, would be curious to get feedback on the land use section in particular, just given again, recognizing that the the limited ability to, oftentimes with these, you'll print out a big map and then have folks like talk about where I want more businesses, where I want more housing and where I want more parks and that kind of thing. And we can certainly do that same exercise here, but recognizing that there's, in most of the communities we work, there'd be more undeveloped land in which people can dream and envision and and do that kind of thing. If there are sort of ways in which you'd like to tweak it to better, I tried to to tweak it a little bit to better fit a place that doesn't have as much undeveloped land, but if there are other ideas for how to do that, more than welcome to. But again, same, 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 same process. If you have any feedback within, say, a week or so, would love to to get that. And then we can work with the city to identify a date and location and and all of that to to best do that, hopefully early to mid August. Would that be there? Yeah.
Well, I'll be out of town for part of that, but hopefully I'll be here for that.
Can I make one just for a suggestion, since we're talking about the land use one in particular? The only two, I think it may be helpful for us to have some feedback specifically on the VDOT and the Spotswood Parcels.
Yes, agreed.
City owned parcels specific. And Jeremy, the way you just described it, I don't, could we do maybe two different one for land use just in general? And then maybe X out on that map, those two parcels, and then have another station that allows people a little bit more freedom to sort of make recommendations on those two. Because I think that might be helpful sort of as we're going forward and sort of visioning and thinking about what could happen with those two. I just think that additional information specific to those parcels may be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great idea.
I think people would really appreciate that too, that opportunity to to be heard. All right, so so same timeline on comments.
If that's workable for y'all and.
And and I know you said the other one, this was the other document.
That is correct.
Okay, great. Super. All right, does anybody else have any questions for Jeremy before we release him? All right, well, thank you so much for for driving up, for taking all the time to put all this together. It's a, it's fantastic and and we'll, we'll get back in touch with you. You'll be hearing from us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Let's see, next item on the agenda, we are on page thirty nine of our packet. And and it is the planning commission areas of focus and other ongoing initiatives. So Arnie, do we have a staff report?
We do, unfortunately, I probably need to share this with Jeremy, but you had asked that in preparation for these meetings, that we also provide, Jeremy, with what we're currently working on. So our work program for twenty twenty five, as you know, included in order and prioritized order, Mini Warehouse, which we have finalized, the planning commission and council is going to have a advertised public hearing at their next meeting or two meetings, I can't remember when to advertise it honestly. So that will be wrapped up fairly shortly, I do believe. The next item to get into was the entrance corridor zoning amendment, where we would go through our two entrance corridor standards and see how much, we wanted to really delve into that, if it's more just about signage, because we do have signs out there that were partially paid by the city, but that language was never codified in our ordinance. So that needs to clean up at a minimum and also to see how much further perhaps we wanted to get into sort of design requirements and other things. It has not been started yet. Comp plan review. Started. Townhouses was another potential, because we have used design standards, they're outdated. And we have had some interest in the past, even though it has not come to fruition yet for both the Spotswood parcel and the VDOT parcel. And I would like to work on townhouse design standards, just because what we have is wonky, is not really workable. It's so minimal, I think it would be a bear to have some better standards. And the other one was also to do a zoning ordinance amendment and work through plan development, but residential to have sort of more, not sort of, but to have more flexibility on the residential side, instead of just single family detached on a lot. Perhaps allowing some of that missing middle that we don't currently allow. So more flexibility on the residential side. That was your work program that for twenty twenty five.
Great. Do, so is anything else? Okay, so I will open the floor for public comment on this issue. If anybody wants to make a statement or ask a question. And seeing as no one is hopping up to this, to the microphone, I'm gonna close public comment and open pub, uh, commission discussion. Does, does anybody have any thoughts on or concerns about or questions for Arnie? No? Okay. Well, then we will continue with these items. And so next up is, I guess, Arnie, is your sense that we'll have, when will we get to the entrance corridor zoning? Is that something that that we might sort of slip in here and there? Or I know you're you're down to to only yourself in the in the planning department.
And as I'm thinking about it, what's also complicating things a little bit is we recently had changes at the state level for site plans and subdivisions. And I have gotten a preliminary from our attorneys, I need to get that turned around also, because that needs to happen sooner than later. Then we also have the short term rental that I would prefer be done by the end of the year, so that we have those in line when the annual registration start again in January. It's gonna be perhaps a little bit before, honestly, we can get to the entrance quarter or the other items that still haven't been started.
Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll hope for the best. If you have time and you can fit, fit in some entrance corridor, that would be great. And I don't know, perhaps if if we, I suppose anybody on on planning commission could take it up and and look at it and make comments for you to to review, is that?
Sure, if that's what somebody would like to take on, then I'm just worried about when is it gonna actually come back around for a full discussion?
Yeah.
That still is to be determined.
Right, okay. Alrighty, well then we will move on to annual review of conflicts of interest.
Sorry for providing you with so much paper in your particular packets. It was just brought to my attention or I was reminded, cause I'd forgotten. Normally when we do your annual nomination and vote for chair and vice chair, that gives us an opportunity to do some of the other housekeeping things. And so we were just passing along for your consideration or review, the conflicts of interest and also the code of ethics. So nothing to be done, nobody's gotten in trouble, this isn't spurred by a particular event or a statement or anything. And on page forty, just as an example, because we had a couple of W and L ones, that's why we have this email from the city attorney, Jeremy Carroll. And it is the follow up, so we had one that was a site plan and the second was a use determination. I think I've got that the right, but it's in his, so there is just some direction, guidance for you. I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I think he says something to the effect that this wasn't terribly great legislation in that you have to have some interpretation of what it is. And he can provide guidance up to a certain point, if you have specific questions. I don't wanna hopefully get into that what if scenario tonight, because I'm not gonna be able to provide you great guidance. But if you have a specific question, if this comes up, am I conflicted or not? Please send it to me and I'll pass it along to Jeremy and get that answer back to you and to the group. But this is more just background, in case it comes up, that you're aware, first of all, that we do have conflicts of interest, legislation that needs to be followed. And then second, on page forty three, that there is a disclosure form. So you, and you've seen that before, somebody has a conflict, they state what the conflict is and they say why, and then they leave the dais. Or they say, I have an interest, but it's not a conflict and they stay on the dais and continue with the discussion. Now, obviously this one applies to one particular one and you would just sort of amend it as needed for whatever that particular situation is.
And and just to be clear, anybody who has a conflict would need to prepare this on their own or they could contact you for help. And and it would, and then you read it ahead of, I think everybody's been here for that.
Because we had a specific question early enough, Jeremy was able to provide this particular one for that situation and the one prior also. But if it's one where we, you don't get specific guidance beforehand, yes, you will need to prepare one on your own and we're certainly glad to help.
Right, thank you. Is there anything else on? This? Looks like that's all. So, okay.
So that was conflicts.
Right. I think that that I need to have a public comment now. So. If anybody has a public comment, a comment to make on the annual review of conflicts of interest, I would invite you to come up to the microphone. And seeing that we do not have any, I'm going to close public comment, move on to commission discussion. Does anybody have anything that they want to ask Arnie or talk about?
I was reading, I'm just confused, I think. Because it says if you have an interest only with like WNL, for example, that if WNL is the only person involved, that then it is more of an interest. But if there's other parties involved, they don't have to, but it seems like that should be the opposite. And I don't. If more people are involved to have, that feels confusing. I don't, I've, I've been trying to think about this. I I read it before I came and I don't know my feelings or words yet, clearly. But I, it feels like, right now it says they have to recuse themselves if WNL, in this example, is the only party involved. But if there's more parties, they don't have to.
Is it, is it that if it's WNL is the only party or if, or if you're, sorry. It is confusing. We had this issue. And when I lived in, in the last place we lived, and I was on, on commission, on council, sorry. And and there were things that we had to recuse ourselves about, but then if it was something that the college was doing. That impacted not just, it wasn't just the college, but it like impacted everybody equally, then we could vote on it. Like if it impacted us, impacted us as residents. So I'm not sure whether that's exactly what you're getting at. Just, Arnie, maybe you've got some more insight.
The only insight I would have is, as in Jeremy's memo, this, the transaction has applications solely to the property or business in which the officer has a personal interest. So i- if you can formulate a specific question, just shoot it to me and then I'll pass it along to get you the right answer.
Yeah, I don't have, I, it just, it felt backwards and I don't have an answer of why it felt backwards. So I will think about that now.
This is glorially stuff, so therefore it doesn't seem.
It's all, it, it's like, it feels like it's designed to turn you around. And then you're like, I think so. I'm married to a lawyer, oh.
Indeed. Okay, anybody else have any? Okay, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the annual review of the Code of Ethics.
Similar to the conflicts of interest, this is just for your information, please be aware that there is a code of ethics for all boards, not just for city council. And you have some guidelines there to guide your decisions and how you act as a board member or council member. Nothing specific, just to make you aware. As we're doing these housekeeping measures.
Okay. I'm going to open the floor for public comment on this issue on the agenda, the Code of Ethics. Anybody? Okay, I am going to close public comment. Any commission discussion on the Code of Ethics? Okay, let's move along to the next item, which is electing a new chairperson. So. For which you can serve no more than two consecutive terms. And so I will entertain nominations from the dais. For next year's chairperson. Anybody?
I'd nominate you to continue serving as chair if you're willing to do so for another year, as long as others will agree.
I, well, thank you. And I would accept that nomination. Do we need to have?
Second.
Yes, there, there were two seconds.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear.
So do we need a vote? Yeah, okay, a roll call vote?
No, just called.
Just a call vote, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, next person, thank you very much, by the way, is to elect a vice chairperson. So call for nominations.
John, Don, have you already served one?
I, I have, and I, I would not at all mind if someone else wished to step into that.
I would say it would be great if you would continue, John, if you'd be willing to.
I'll certainly second that.
Well, I'd be willing then, yeah, thank you.
That's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? No. And I mean, which is to say, sorry, there's nobody, nobody voted no. Because we all already voted aye. Okay, it was unanimous. Just state that for the record. Okay, well, congratulations and thank you. And moving on then to other business. Arnie, do you have a zoning and planning report for us?
Yes, we had three WNL students creating a Strong Towns local conversation. And the first meeting was held last week. And if you go to strongtownslexingtonva.com, you'll see more information there and for more engagement opportunities in the future.
You said that strongtownslexingtonva.com?
Got that right?
Yes, and 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 the two young folks in our audience are are the folks who, two of the folks who put that together. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I'm excited to look at that.
And as an offshoot of that, they've also reported at their last meeting that WNL's Mud Center for Ethics will have a 2025 through 2026 program that will focus on sustainable land use. And that might be a good tie in with what we're doing with our comp plan. That's all I have for report.
Great, okay. And do we, did you have a city council report from Leslie? Okay. All right, well then we are at the end of our program and I, I cannot end it on my own.
Move the adjourn.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Big red button, Arnie.
That's right.
Wait.